Good evening, everyone. I am Mei Hong, the Executive Director of the Chinese Culture Connection. On behalf...
It's not on.
...of our community partners...
Hang on a second, Mei. They're gonna put it on.
This is not on?
No, it is not.
Oh, no, it's on. Okay, good. It was a green light. Okay, great. All right, very good. Now we get started. Good evening, everyone. I am Mei Hong, the Executive Director of the Chinese Culture Connection. On behalf of our partners and community members, thank you so much for joining us tonight, meeting the candidates for the City Council at large forum. I would like to take this opportunity to express our deep appreciation for the city of Malden for opening this chamber room for us to congregate tonight, and our dedicated planning team, who helped make this event possible. And our moderator, Bridget Brown, I don't know where she is. I hope she's here. Okay, okay. Thank you. For stepping in on such a short notice. Thank you so much for your support and flexibility. The purpose of this forum is to foster civic engagement and empower our community to become informed voters, who inform and active participants in the democratic process. In a time marked by political division, global conflicts, and present challenges like climate change, it is more important than ever to lift our collective spirit and come together to build a stronger and more unified community. I know some people have a lot of concern about this particular event that we offered. We try very hard to accommodate every single candidate. So if you have any question about that we are partial and to particular favor in any candidate, come talk to me. For the last 25 years that we have been invited to Malden to help the general public, to help to bridge gaps and support the Asian immigrant community, it is our incredible pride that we have been doing what's best for the public. And that's how it sustains us, and will continue to do so. So now, I would like to introduce our youth call moderator, Thomas County of Malden High School, who will share more about voter resources. You will find registration forms and some information at our check-in table, and volunteers are available to help you if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, so hello, everyone. Today, I'd like to go over a little bit about what a municipal election is and what it matters to our city of Malden. And so for those of you who do not know, a municipal election is a local election which residents, in this case, residents of Malden, are going to vote to elect our public officials, such as our mayor, city councilors, and school committee members, who will manage city-level decisions like budgets, servicing, and zoning. It's how our community chooses our local leadership and sets our priorities that affect the daily lives of our citizens in our town. Tonight is an opportunity for all of us as residents to hear directly from the candidates before casting their votes. And so a little bit of a timeline here. Our municipal election is going to be November 4, 2025, between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. But before that, leading up to it, our last day to register is going to be October 25, 2025. The last day to request a vote-by-mail ballot or an absentee ballot is going to be Tuesday, October 28. And before Election Day, voters are going to be able to cast early ballots as well. And so in general, what is going to be on your ballot will be a mayor election. Obviously, this year is not a mayoral year. This is something that happens every four years. You would elect our mayor. Right now, our incredible mayor, Mayor Christensen. You will also see city councils at large, three elects. And these individuals run two-year terms, as well as our ward councilors and our school committee members, who each represent individual wards in the eight wards for the city of Malden. And so these roles are going to directly influence the schools, budgets, neighborhood development, and the services of our city. And so these are going to have the most impact on your daily life as parents, as individuals, as citizens of Malden. So as I mentioned earlier, Malden is divided into eight wards. And so just by a quick head nod, do you all know what ward you live in and who represents you? So got some, but I would assume that not everyone here knows exactly what the ward is. So if you don't, I do encourage you to go on Malden's, City of Malden website, and find what ward you live in, because it is important to know both who represents you and who is going to run to represent you, because these are going to be the individuals who allow for your specific part of Malden to gain the representation it deserves in our city council, in our school committee meetings, and other things like that as well. And so just some general important information. So all the election details are going to be on the City of Malden's website, but just some key reminders. So like I said, that key date, the general election, is going to be on November 4, 2025. There are obviously voter registration deadline we mentioned earlier of October 25, although there may be some different deadlines as well. And just vote-by-mail and absentee ballots, make sure you know when to get those in and get them in early, because mail does not magically appear in the... like where it needs to be after it gets put in the mailbox. It takes some time, so make sure to get that in early so your vote matters. We are a community, and so every single vote holds a lot more weight than it would in a national or a state-level election. Each one of these votes can sway the tides into a policy that you believe in. And so just one last note I want to make here about these vote-by-mail boxes. So Malden does provide these drop boxes for vote-by-mail. However, the main drop box is actually right outside here of 215 Pleasant Street. It is open 24 hours, but these ballots must be dropped off by 8:00 p.m. on November 4, 2025. But try to get them in earlier, because as I mentioned earlier, it may take some time for this mail to actually, you know, get in and so your ballot can be voted.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Bridget Brown, and I serve on several boards and committees, and also work with several organizations throughout Massachusetts and coastal South Carolina. And on behalf of the Chinese Culture Connection mass vote, which really kind of brought me here, and our community partners, we welcome all of you, each of you, for being here in person and also on Zoom. This evening, we're pleased to host the council, the Malden City Council candidates, who have each taken time out of their busy schedules to be with us and to share their ideas, priorities, and hopes for this community. Tonight's event is about civic participation, the idea that democracy is strongest when we show us, show up, listen, and engage with one another respectfully. We also want to thank our interpreters for helping to ensure that everyone can participate fully in this forum. And this event is being broadcast live on Urban Media Arts' YouTube page. So before we begin, we're going to go over some of the ground rules and etiquettes for tonight. I'd like to briefly just kind of explain this to you, and I'm sure that you all will respect them. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for opening and closing statements. For most questions, they'll have two minutes to respond. Thank you so much. So each candidate will have one and a half minutes for opening and closing statements. For most questions, they'll have two minutes to respond. During the lightning round, answers will be limited to two minutes per question. We ask that everyone, candidates and audience members, remain respectful. Please do not interrupt while others are speaking, and hold your applause until the end of the forum. All audience questions must be submitted in writing to our volunteers. Questions will be reviewed and grouped by topic to ensure fair and balanced discussion. So we appreciate your cooperation in helping us keep this civil and informative. And we will start with our candidate opening statements. So each candidate will introduce themselves and provide an opening statement. And we'll go from my right, but your left, to the left. So let's start. We'll start with Cologne Hayes. Pardon me, I'm new to the coordinated sound system.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Cologne Hayes. I am your City Councilor-at-Large, and I am running for reelection this November. First of all, I would love to thank all of you, the participants who showed up tonight, because this matters, and I'm so glad that you're here. I also would like to thank my fellow candidates who are... it's not easy to run for office, but the people need choices, and it's good for our democracy, so thank you for running. And of course, Mei Hong, Chinese Culture Connection. I'm not going to name all of them maybe till the end, because it's only a minute and a half. But as a city councillor, I want to say that the most important thing to me is to listen. What I do is I listen to everyone in the community, whether or not I agree with them or not. And I go out in the community, and I make sure that I'm in the public, because that is where the magic happens. That's where people open up, and they talk to you, and they tell you what's going on in our city. And my priorities are that, basically just to listen and to move Malden forward. If you want a councillor that will boldly speak for you and your rights, that will go against the status quo and won't just be status quo, someone who will not just get along, you know, to go along. If you want someone who will fight for you without any fear and truth and honesty, and being honest, then I'm asking for your vote on November 4, and I promise that I will speak and always bring your voice to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Appreciate it. Now, we're going to move on to Mr. Solomon Davidoff. I believe I pronounced it right.
Solomon Davidoff, yes. Thank you. The only problem with going second or later is everyone always says and always starts with everything you're going to say. But some does bear repeating. Thank you for showing up. As Karen says, it's incredibly important. Voting is a right and a responsibility. And casting an educated vote is more important than anything else. So thank you all. Thanks to Chinese Cultural Connection for putting together all of the organizations taking part in this so we can get our messages out to everyone as clearly as possible. When I first looked at serving on an organization board earlier in my life, I asked my father. My parents had both served on countless boards for educational organizations, for business, for other things. And my father told me, early on, over 20, over 30 years ago, the most important thing was interpretation. That what he felt was most important was to make sure that everyone understood what everyone else at the table was saying, because that's where disconnect happens. That's where people cause drama and don't understand where they're going. That is something I would like to bring to Malden City Council. Things have slowed down as of late, I feel. And I think there is so much that we can accomplish, and I would like to help. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Now we'll move on to Ms. Michelle Luang.
Good evening, everyone. I can echo what everybody said, and thank you so much for being here. My name's Michelle Luang. I'm running to be one of your next Malden City Councilors-at-Large. I'm a lifelong Malden resident, a small-business owner, and a proud community advocate. I was raised right here with two hard-working parents. My mom was in a food prep line, and my dad was a union laborer. And today, my family is a fourth-generation union family. And I carry those values of hard work, fairness, and community with me every day. I'm raising my two daughters on Daniel Street, right next to my childhood home. I attended the Daniel School, Malden High School, and Salem State, now University. And I've always believed in giving back, from fighting to save Ferryway Green to serving on the Malden School Committee, where I launched an anti-bully task force, as well as a special education audit, and I've always worked to make Malden better. I've stood up for youth and women with Malden Zonta, helped to end child marriage in Massachusetts, brought visually impaired tools to the Malden Public Library with the Malden Lions Club. This year, I hope, I was so excited to be part of the opening of the first Asian-American Community Center through GMAK. I'm running because Malden faces real challenges: economic pressure, climate resilience, transportation, language access, and youth engagement. We need thoughtful, experienced leadership that put people first. As your city councillor, I will listen, I will collaborate, and I hope to earn your vote on November 4. Let's build Malden together.
Thank you so much, Ms. Luang. Now we'll move on to Councillor McDonald.
Thank you. I'm Carrie McDonald, and I'm very proud to be running for a third term as one of your Malden City Councilors-at-Large. I am a Malden Public Schools parent. I've got two kids, and an active community volunteer. And in my day job, I'm a nonprofit executive. I live in the Forestdale neighborhood, and I just love this city. I love Malden and all of the mix of people and places that are here. And I ran for office because I wanted to have an impact. And the two terms that I've had so far, I've really tried to focus on places where that's possible. So some of those include sustainability. I've worked a lot on climate action. I'm so proud. We have our first climate action plan. I'm sure we'll talk more about that. And sustainability of our finances. I'm Chair of the Finance Committee, and that's certainly a big conversation today, how we sustain our city services and our infrastructure. Affordability, we've reduced utility bills in Malden. Housing affordability remains a huge challenge. I know we'll talk about that. And inclusion, making sure this is a safe and equitable community for everyone who lives here is a high priority for me. As bad as the national news gets, and it gets pretty bad, I want to tell you that I find hope in what we're able to do and invest right here in our community. Local leadership really matters in protecting our neighbors and securing a future for our kids where we can build a career and grow old. And that's been my priority every single day that I've been elected. So thank you to our community organizations for hosting this. Thank you to all of you who are here in person or watching online, and I'm really looking forward to a great conversation. I love these forums. They are really where we talk about what matters. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councillor McDonald. And now we'll move on to Mr. Craig Spetafor.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I too want to thank all the hosts and everybody helping us present. This evening is great to be in front of people. I think all the current councillors like when the room is packed. I lived in the city of Malden my whole life. My career, I work in finance. I have three beautiful children. Hard to believe my oldest one will be 18, my youngest one will be 15, and I'm bringing him up in this great, great city. I've changed my opening remarks based on last week's news of our budget, because I think it's that important. And that's why I'm asking for reelection. The opportunity to be part of this... sorry, tonight, I want to draw our attention right now to the pressing concerns that affects us, and that's the future of our community, because everybody in this room will be affected by a proposal to raise our taxes 2.5%. It's an override to prevent a significant deficit and consequences of several things: a bad economy, a bad school funding formula, and a concentrated tax base. As public resources dwindle, we find ourselves at a critical crossroads. We must need and recognize the necessity for a clear vision and decisive execution of change in the future. This is not something we're playing around with. People's livelihoods are in the matter. I know we'll have this conversation through the rest of this forum, but I promise you, if I elected, I will lead, and leadership is about taking action. And I promise, if cuts need to be made, we'll make those cuts. And if not, we'll put it to the residents and find out what's important. But at the end of this day, it will be challenging. Thank you.
Thank you also very much for your opening statements. We really appreciate it. Now we're going to move into our first set of questions. These are representative questions.
Hello, hello. Thank you, Councillor-at-Large, for the quick bio. We really appreciate it. I'm sure the audience is going to look forward to hearing more about it. I just want to put a reminder out that we'll have our volunteers walking around, passing around pieces of paper. And please feel free to write some questions and bring it up over here. And then we're going to vet them out and bring them open for the open audience section, okay? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. So each question will be answered by all candidates, and each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond. And what we'll do is we'll kind of go back from my left to my right in responding to them. So the first question? Housing stabilization. How would you address rising housing costs and the displacement of longtime Malden residents while still making it a place for those just starting on their adult journey? Yes. Yes. That's okay.
Thank you for the question. I'll be honest, that's probably the trickiest formula we all, this is the entire state, right? We are in a housing crisis, both in the number of units and affordability. The challenge we've had is we've taken every bit of property we've had, we've passed the ADUs, when the MBTA community's owned, to increase the number of housing. That's never going to dig us out of that problem, to be very honest with you. I think the way you keep people in their homes is you increase the commercial and industrial tax base in the city. That's the only way to make Malden more affordable. Right now, Malden is 90% residential. And as we push those taxes on the residents, it makes homeowners and renters that much more expensive. I'll give you a quick stat. The city of Everett collects $11 million in personal property taxes. That's just equipment. The city of Malden collects three. So if you want to keep people in their homes and make it more affordable, you need to diversify the tax base. Building more units is just not going to be the answer, because we're not going to dig ourselves out of the hole. You look at our communities around us that have affordability components, Cambridge, Somerville, Boston, they have the highest rents in the state. We need a diverse tax base to help the current residential tax base get some relief.
Thank you very much, Councillor McDonald.
Thank you. I'm really glad we're starting with this question, because it is, in fact, a crisis in our community, the cost of housing, and people are 100% getting priced out. I talk to them every day, and those who are afraid that they will be next. And we've done some things. We have. We've created an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We've strengthened that. We've invested in it. But we can and we need to do more on the cost of housing in Malden. I do want to let you know that I've been working with one of my colleagues, Councillor Linehan, on some common sense housing changes that we hope to propose in the near future. And I want to talk to you about what those things are. The first is that, as you know, the city council sets the rules on what you can build. And we make it really hard to build certain things in Malden. I think we need common sense neighborhoods in Malden. That does not mean that we put high rises on every block. It does mean that our rules act like we're North Reading. And what that means is it is very hard to stay in the houses you are in, because you can't improve them. You can't add a family room or an in-law suite. Now, we do have the ability to add accessory dwelling units. That will help, but that's not getting us there. So that's one part is common sense neighborhood rules. The second is to make it easier to build affordable housing. We have some policies that do that, but we need more. And particularly, we need to streamline the permitting, because it takes a long time and that adds costs to projects. And three, we need to make sure that we have good rental policies. This is actually a separate paper we're working on right now. We've proposed creating a registry for landlords, just like you have a license to do any other business in the city. There are lots of good landlords in Malden. We want good landlords. We need renters. But we also have absentee landlords who do not maintain their properties, and this will help us be in good touch with them And this will help us be in good touch with them and hold them accountable. So I just want to say, I think that, you know, it is a regional problem, but there is more that research has shown and that other communities have done that can make more types of housing available at different price points for starting out or growing old and wanting to downsize into a more affordable unit. And I think it needs to be a high priority for us in the next year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. One of the things that comes to mind is, you know, all of the new construction and affordable housing that we have put in, as well as the, more importantly, the more of the affordable homeownership. And I'd like to see us to have more opportunities for a wider range of lower-income people to be able to afford and to be able to come into that market. So I hope that we can make sure that the projects that we do have in place have Malden residents at heart and by priority. You know, we also need to evaluate and make sure that, you know, we prioritize all of those things. What the elderly need, and what do the lower-income and what do the families need to sustain themselves and to be part of this community? People are aging in place, and they want to be able to stay here and to build a life here. And there's many things that we can do on a rental basis. You know, when big buildings or big apartments are purchased, we can put a moratorium that says that a landlord, if they purchase a home that has under, that's under-market rent, and that person's been there for a good amount of time, the landlord should only be able to raise that rent a certain percentage over a period of time. They shouldn't just be able to come in, raise the rent, and then those people have to move. So I think we need...
Thank you very much. Sarah?
Sorry, thank you. I agree with what's been said. I believe we really need to focus a bit more on affordability within starter locations. As I'm sure all of you know, lots of people are interested in Malden, but there's very little that opens up. And yet, as Craig brought up, we right now have a, when you look at the tax base, an overabundance of residents compared to industry or compared to commerce. What I would like to see are more partnerships with groups like Habitat for Humanity and others that help to build housing for those who are starting out, who do need help, who do need assistance, and want to stay in the community. I think at best, we should grow the community within people who want to be here, who want to stay here, who want to enhance life here. Tacking on to one more point. And accountability for the situation of absentee landlords is essential. We have many areas that I've looked in. I've talked with people who say they have difficulty in this area, where they keep running into houses that just are not maintained. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate that. I'm getting it.
Got it. Thank you for this question. I feel very strongly about this question. Housing is a human right. I've seen here in Malden how we are outgrowing and we are pushing out people in our community that have been here for many, many years. Our seniors, I see it's gentrification basically is what's happening. So years ago, about 15 years ago now, I actually did bring up inclusionary zoning with the Mass Senior Action Council. Some of them are here. I remember it very well. That's how we met. I've been fighting this for many years, before it became a crisis and before it was something that people were okay to talk about. It's, inclusionary zoning is something that helps where people who like are putting in high-rise or apartments that are very expensive, they put some of the funding away into a fund that we could use for affordable housing. Or landlords are purchasing and could make sure that there are affordable housing in with the building that they're making. And that, to me, as a social worker, is, I think that's a great thing, because we all learn from each other from all walks of life. So I like when it's mixed use like that. So I also fight this in my personal life. I'm a board member for the Metro Norris Housing Corp. And we have been fighting for affordable housing units in Malden. And I'm so proud to say that the 14 units that housed, actually unhoused, folks opened at Bread of Life, and it is working. And I can't wait to actually start doing more of that. There are things that we can do here. We don't have to just count on, you know, raising taxes and getting more funds. There are ways that we can work around that. And I have the experience in that and can't wait to continue that work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all very good questions. I'm so excited. Our next question is concerning business and economic development. And we'll start back with you, Karen, since we finished there. The question is, what would you do to bring more business to Malden and support the local businesses we currently have?
Thank you. So I'm a big supporter of small businesses here in Malden. I've done everything I can. I visit the small businesses to see how we can help them. During COVID, when ARPA funding came out, I was in the business office saying, listen, we can't just be giving funding to big businesses. We need, especially because of our immigrant population and the people that we have here, a lot of those folks I know in Puerto Rico, and our family does a lot of, like, not brick-and-mortar businesses. So I really fought hard to try and get funding for those who are not brick-and-mortar and start small businesses, because that's how people feed their families. The other thing about bringing new business, I've been looking at the zoning that was changed here before I was on the council, where they switched the zoning in the downtown area to like three stories. I'm not sure exactly why that was, but what that did was zone us right out of doing like mixed-use housing. You can build on top and have people who can live there and then have a business underneath that brings in revenue to this city. So we have to look more at doing those types of things that give housing and that increase our tax revenue by, you know, including businesses. But I also do support minority-owned businesses, any small business, but I try and visit them. I did it just last week, as a matter of fact. I show up, I ask them what they need. Unfortunately, I did show up to an Ethiopian restaurant that had some racial slurs on their doors. So I'm working with them personally, with my husband, trying to see how we can get those off the doors, because they didn't have the funding for that, and it really disturbed me. But I'm a big proponent of fighting for the small business owner. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've long felt that to have a community grow, you need to support those who support the community. And that's the business, those are the businesses. We really need a variety of support. Language support primarily, better ways to promote and publicize those unique businesses that are in the Malden area. The gaming district was a wonderful idea, but I see that as just part of it. Also, there is an incredible parking difficulty, as I'm sure anybody who has a business in the area realizes. I will be upfront. I do not have a perfect answer for that yet. I'm still working on it and still trying to figure out what can best be done. It's been throwing the city off for years. I think also, support of the individual businesses requires everyone to be best and more familiar with what is available. We don't really do our best, I think, as a city in publicizing what makes Malden unique, what is available. Again, we started with some of the small signs detailing what's available in certain areas, mostly downtown, but I'd like to see more of that. I'd like to see more of that for individual smaller areas and promoting them and showing people what unique resources we have here, what unique businesses we have, and then have more availability, not just within city council, but within the mayor's office, within the city offices, for the resources that are there for everyone.
Thank you very much. Michelle?
Hello. Well, I can tell you, as a small business owner myself, and I've been in business for over 20 years, we have, you know, as a small business owner, you tend to wear many hats. And I think it's really, really hard for small businesses to be able to do it all. So to have a business development office that not only works to bring people in, to bring other businesses into the city, but it also should be there to support the small business owner. And I absolutely agree, we have language barriers, but we also have just basic small business needs. It can be from financial. And in this climate right now, it could also be around immigration. You know, one of the first things my husband and I did in the current climate was to make sure that we made sure all of our employees' immigration documents were all updated. And sometimes, you know, that's, I speak English and I understand the reason for that, and I can get things translated, but a lot of small businesses don't have access to that information. So really, for me, it's really about, you know, again, Solomon and other people said, you know, increasing parking, we absolutely need to do that. We need increased access, but more importantly, to bring businesses in, we need to have a strong business development office that's not only market our city as a place to be, but also to help the businesses that are here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is such an essential topic. I'm really glad that we're starting by talking about small businesses here in this question. They are generators of wealth. Like, that's how people are able to access a different kind of life for their family is by owning a business. And we have amazing small businesses in Malden. During, coming out of the pandemic, I worked with our Business Development Subcommittee on our federal funds to put together a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce where we funded outreach to immigrant-owned businesses, minority- and BIPOC-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, to help get them connected to the services that were there. I would really love to see that build towards something that's more like an incubator, where you've got like a one-stop shop for new business ideas. We're not quite there yet, but I believe. Mostly, I though want to say, when we talk about economic development, we really need more than, you know, small fixes. We need a big-picture strategy. And that is what works in lots of other communities. We've seen it work in Somerville. We've seen it work in Woburn. We've seen it work in Watertown with the projects they've been able to do there. I hope this is okay to say, Craig. But councillor Spatafor and I, last year, had a whole series of conversations with the mayor's team about particularly the Commercial Street Corridor, which is just ripe for redevelopment, underutilized properties. Land is very precious in Malden. So when we have those opportunities, we have to be smart, and it takes all hands on deck. You think about the underlying zoning, you think about the permitting that's there. You try to build a vision that will actually inspire that investment. I do not think that we have had a strong enough strategy for the kind of economic development that our city needs. I really want us to push towards that. I think we can do more at the council to understand what are the barriers we're hearing from business owners who are trying to invest in the city? And how can we build the political space to hold that big-picture set of possibilities? So I really look forward to working with my colleagues to do that. That is also, yes, a key part of our tax base issues. And I think there's a lot of opportunity. Thank you.
I was so excited when you brought my name up there, councillor. Thank you. I'm very excited. To the translators, I'm going to talk really fast. So I agree, we need a bold vision. That should be the focus right now in getting us to help bring businesses, both small and large, this community, as well as helping the existing ones. First of all, this city, this community, has multiple areas of business: neighborhood business, downtown business, ROI-A, ROI-B-A. In the square, you can build more than three stories. Neighborhood businesses, we limited to three stories. So we can readjust that. I believe also we're talking about affordable homeownership. We should have some affordable grants for businesses, for bakers and things like that want to come here, and we can help them with the storefront until they get up on their own feet to help those small businesses come here. The thing about businesses, people understand, that's a ballast for the tax base, both commercial and industrial. When you think industrial today, it's not pipe fitting and oil and all the things that happened in the past. You're talking about robotics and AI and battery design. We have a building across the street where we have a company from Woburn coming in. The more important thing is, they pay 58% more taxes per thousand. They also pay business permits. They have to get annual business permits. They also pay personal property tax. Again, that's a tax you do not share with the residents, meaning that tax comes, it goes right to the coffers. There's no school, nothing drains that because the resources are not being plagued by that tax. If we increase our business tax, we can keep the residential tax at a very reasonable price for living in the city of Malden. And the last thing, which nobody's mentioned, if we bring more businesses here, they actually can hire, hopefully, local residents. And that brings a whole new dimension to this community. That's what my focus is going to be if I'm lucky to be reelected, is looking at the area that councillor McDonald said. We have water in this city. We have riverfront. You put a hotel there, you get luxury tax, a hotel tax, and food and beverage tax. Those are all the things that make Malden cheaper and more affordable. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for answering our questions about business and economic development. Now we're going to move on to question number two. And we'll start from this end and go from my left to my right. This question is about civic engagement and communication. Here we go. The animosity at city hall meetings have created divisions in the community. How would you ensure debates remain respectful, transparent, and focused on residents' needs?
Don't I? Well, I think, first, I got to ask a question is, when you talk about that, are you talking about the council? You're talking about the people in the audience? Right? So that's two phases. One is how we treat each other's colleagues and how the audience treats each other in the councils. First of all, we're a community. There should be love in this community, not hate. The idea that somebody has a different opinion should not get other people riled up. That's what the beauty of this country is. If somebody believes something on this side, you can believe it on that side. You don't have to taunt them. That's both in the audience and on this council. Sometimes, some of us get passionate. I'm one of them. I'm Italian. I'm not yelling. People think I'm yelling. But I also believe there's a respect factor that everybody both has in this community, in this country. And I'll be quite honest with you, we've lost it. We've lost it, because we can't sit across from each other and have a meaningful debate without saying, you're completely wrong, I'm completely wrong. That's a problem in this country right now. I don't think I need to go into that. But I think in terms of just the community, we have more outreach than we ever had. I've been a councillor for a while. We have email, phone, everything that you can get a hold of communication. Malden's changing. So should the city. We should start looking at technologies to make it easy to communicate like we're doing now. Unfortunately, AI is here, right? We can communicate much faster. Everybody saw the AirPods now, the AirBuds. You can literally translate almost real time. That's important. But I think people just need to sit down and talk to each other face-to-face, get off social media, and sit down and let's go to a local bakery or have a beer. And you will probably agree with half the stuff on the other end. And if you don't, shake hands and move on. We're all neighbors.
Thank you.
You know, the thing about local government is that you can't get away from the people that you may disagree with. You're going to run into them at the grocery store. You're going to run into them at the PTO event. You're going to run into them on the sidewalk. And so it really forces us to grapple with this. So many of us love that Malden is diverse, in just every way: racially, religiously, ethnically, in terms of language. And that means that, friends, we are going to disagree a fair amount of the time. And so the question that I hold is, how do we disagree without undermining one another's humanity? And as it happens, I have been currently appointed head of the Code of Conduct Ad Hoc Subcommittee of the city council. So this is a very apropos conversation. So we actually are talking about this. My kind of rule of thumb in this is, so my kids, they're eight and 10, they watch a lot of the meetings. And sometimes they have some questions for me about what exactly was said and why it was said that way. My rule of thumb is I want to make my kids and all of our kids proud to watch our discussions and debates when they see their leaders in their community. So we'll see what comes out to that, but I do agree, respect is essential. I think a willingness to be wrong and admit when you are wrong and to learn is essential. And I want to just point out that while we focus on what happens on this dais, the truth is, the best community engagement does not happen on Tuesday nights when we're all talking at each other. It happens through carefully-designed community engagement processes. Our climate action plan, I'm very proud to say, was like- Our climate action plan, I'm very proud to say, was like this. We engaged over 1,000, maybe 2,000 people through surveys and forums. We went to people in their, you know, the, the clubs that they're already a part of to talk to them about this. We had language-based focus groups so people could really communicate with us, and we talked to them about their priorities, and then we listened to that. And when we take the time to listen and do the translation, which is so important, then we need to follow through on what our residents have said. So we'll talk more about what that climate action.
Thank you so much.
Hello. Hi. So one of the things, when I say I grew up in Malden, I actually grew up in Wood Seven, which was, which is the most racially, economically, and religiously diverse part of Malden, and has been. I'm 56, so my entire life. So, and beyond. And one of the things, growing up like that, and growing up in Malden, it's, it's learning to get along, and it's learning to respect people and to know people for who they are, what they are, and where they are. And one of my strong points, somebody recently said to me, my goodness, you have so many different people supporting, you know, your campaign, and I'm completely humbled by that. And I think it's just because I'm fair, I listen, and I like to bring people, all the people, to the table. One of the things not many people know is that, growing up, I was bullied. So being a bully survivor, you know that when you meet people as adults, you have to have respect for everybody. And one of the things that's really paramount, and I'm really excited to see that Counselor McDonald is chairing that group around conduct, because lessons learned for our young people, lessons learned for each of us. And I think that walking through the city, as long as we can respect each other and not divide each other, I think we're gonna be one step forward to that. And I look forward to seeing what comes from that.
Thank you so much.
This is a question very important to me. The question of civil civic engagement is one of the reasons I decided to run for city council. We had a number of council meetings recently that focused on questions that did not relate to the city directly. And while I have no difficulty with people discussing and questioning the world at large, in fact, I encourage it. I've taught in 17 disciplines, including sociology, political science, and others. Asking questions and responding to questions is what I do for a living. When my wife and I first moved here 18 years ago, we did because it was a diverse, welcoming city. After that meeting, after those meetings that I briefly referred to, the congregation Beth Israel that I'm president of had to get in touch with the FBI because of death threats we got. Recent New Year's religious services, one of our members was actually threatened walking home. Never in the 18 years we have lived here have I seen that in this city. I firmly believe there is a way for us to have civil civic engagement, and I think part of that is focusing on primarily the needs of the city. And that's what I believe city council should be working on, the needs of the city. While I don't blame people who are worried and questioning about what's going on in the world today, I don't think we have time to spend on every world issue within city council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The question was about norms and how we are respectful to each other on the city council. I have lots of issues with how some of our meetings are run. There's over-talking of each other. There's not, you know, you're not being respectful, and that's why I asked for the norms and a group meeting, and that is how Counselor McDonald, he is running it, but I did ask for that for many years, so I'm glad that's happening. And we can be respectful. I'm Puerto Rican. I could say I have passion too, but I know how to control and act professional when I'm in front of people, and especially when youth are watching. And as far as world issues, I'll respond to that. This was a Malden issue. Malden, I'm gonna go back to what I said when I first started here. It was listening to the people. That's what our job is. We had had hundreds and hundreds of Malden residents reach out, and they deserved to be listened to respectfully. And shame on anyone who didn't meet with them and give them the respect that they needed. So again, I will listen to anyone. I will sit across the table from anyone who wants to speak with me. I offer that up to anyone. I will still offer that up to anyone. I am a social worker at heart. I'm a consensus builder. I build groups. I build many, like, neighborhood groups here that are still going strong after 20 years. It's sustainable. That's how you get people to talk to each other. You hold events out in the community. You don't expect people to come in here and come to city hall. I've had festivals. We have block parties. We go out. We take hikes together. We do things that bring people together for a common goal and something that you can really find how you connect with one each other, and not just things that separate you. Because even if you don't agree on some things, you're always gonna find something that brings you together. But you have to come to the table.
Thank you so much. Okay. Great questions, great responses. Now we're gonna move on to question number four. This is a question about city budget, and we're gonna start with Councilwoman Spatafora. This question is, if elected, where would you prioritize spending in the city budget? Schools, infrastructure, public safety, or any other ideas?
Nope. There we go.
There you go.
Well, I think it's a good question. I think that it's probably not properly worded right now. The spending in the budget right now, we have to balance our budget unlike the federal government. So we have a, we don't have an infinite amount of money. We have to spend that money. We actually mandated by state law to spend a minimum on school spending. There's a lot of other things that come along with public safety, DPW, running this building, a lot of other things. I think the question should be worded is, are we gonna continue to keep on funding at this level? And if we are, how are we gonna do that? Because I mentioned in my opening, there's a paper for the first time in the city history of Malden to raise the taxes 2.5%. I will be very honest with you. I think the residents want to see the city participate in that revenue, meaning we should be cutting as well as asking for money. We should not always go to the resident and say, we need more money. And I will be very honest with you, I believe this will not be the last time we have to do an override. Because we used $8.5 million last year in, in free cash. If we get $8 million, that brings us back to zero. That means the following year, we're gonna probably have to ask again. We are in a structural deficit. The house is on fire. We need to put the fire out before we call the fire department.
So I do chair the finance committee, and I just want to say, you know, this is a conversation we've been having for some time. We sponsored resolutions about it. We spent a long time looking at school funding. And, and this cornerstone of, we have to invest in our schools. I mean, they need them, but also we are required by the state to invest in our schools. Means that when we face the same budget pressures that every other city in town around us that doesn't have a giant commercial tax base has been facing, when we face that, the pain will have to be concentrated, if we can't close that gap, in the services that are all of the rest of the city, despite the schools being the largest part. So Medford, Melrose, Stonem, they've all already been to voters to ask about whether they want to consider a tax. And it, to be clear, we can't approve that as the city council. The voters have the ultimate say, and that's as it should be. But we, honestly, I think we've done well to hang on as long as we have without coming to this question for our residents, because we do want to keep Malden affordable. And we have tax programs already, like the residential exemption, and some, you know, some discounts for seniors and veterans and things like that. We should be looking at more of those right now. But the reality is, you know, we are already cutting. We are moving to a new health insurance pool that will hopefully save $3 million next year. We already spend less per person on all the other non-school stuff than almost any other city that is like us, that is our size. So I think we have managed well, but this is where, you know, this is our, our last resort at this point. And we are, I think I have 30 more seconds. We are talking about jobs. I mean, the, the $5.4 million that is our starting point from our mayor, that's three to four dozen firefighters, police officers, librarians, public health employees, DPW workers who pick up those C Click Fix requests. These are real people's jobs. So I'm glad we're having an honest public conversation about this. I think it's right that the voters should weigh in before we make any decision at the city council, and we'll be having a lot of good conversation about that in the finance committee.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that. I know it's pretty scary to think that, to balance our budget, we have to come back to the residents. But the bottom line is, I don't think we're gonna have a choice, and I do agree. But I think there's a lot of work that's gonna have to lead up to that before that's done. And for all of us to work together, and I, and I truly mean this, you know, year after year, I feel like, in my opinion as a resident, that we go from this budget, oh, yeah, we're just gonna, yep, we can do the same for the next budget. And the bottom line is, we really need to start really at the beginning, and we need to do zero, and I've been saying this, do zero budgeting, and we need to make each and every department throughout this entire city justify every expense that they plan on doing for the 2027 budget. At the same time, we do have to increase our commercial tax revenue, and it's all gonna be balancing, and it's all gonna be a big balancing act. But the bottom line is, unfortunately, a prop 2.5 override, unless we get our expenditures in place, is, is a forthcoming future. One of the things I, I really feel is that each and every resident deserves to have the confidence that our city councils, councilors are the checks and balances for Malden. This is a real, this is a time for us to reset, realign, and reimagine how we, how we live in Malden, and how we take care of our, our city, and how we take care of our finances. Thank you.
I am, as I said before, president of a congregation locally and on the finance committee for that. And I have found the first step is prioritization. We have to see, we have to go over what we feel is most important. I've been very planned on that. First responders are exceptionally important. Our schools are exceptionally important. Our libraries are exceptionally important. Public health is exceptionally important. I don't want us to run into the same situation that so many public schools run into when they say there is a budget issue. Oh, let's get rid of the arts. Let's get rid of anything that seems non-essential. We are going to have to make cuts. I hate that. But we've had a number of good years, and we're running into a tighter budget. We're gonna have to. It's going to take work. I think the primary will be to go, as Michelle just said, going to each department, going around and seeing not only what's spent, but what can be held back on. What items that seemed like priorities at the time can perhaps be tabled for a year or two. But I think public safety, public health, education can't be sidelined. They can't be dropped. They can't be ignored.
Thank you. Yes, this is the question of the hour. So if, before we start talking about a prop override, I think what we need to do is get our own house in order. Not only do we need to go line by line, and I'm gonna take some responsibility to this. We had, in our finance committee meeting, the budget come down from the mayor, because he does give us the budget. We probably should have done it then. We should have went line by line and asked those questions. Because now we're faced with a letter from the mayor who wants to do a prop override, go to the residents in the city, and we don't really have all the details. So I'd also like to call for an audit to see where our money's going. Before we ask the public to give up, you know, some more of their hard-earned and lucky money, I want to see, you know, what we're doing. It's good business to audit yourself. It's, you can do it. You can get some free from the state, and we can look into that. I also, I think about the people's budget. We were meeting with them, you know, years ago, and unfortunately, I think they kind of went awry, and, but it was, it's a good thing to do, to get the people involved in the budgeting plan. So that means having, before we just present the budget to you, we involve you in our budget, because you're all very, very smart. I read online what's going on here, and sometimes I get great, great ideas. You have most of the answers. So I'd like to see a people's budget come over here. And if we have to go, I'd like to see a debt override instead of a prop override. But I don't want to make any kind of promises right now, because I need to see tomorrow what we're going to do, and I need to see more information about what's gonna happen, and, you know, how we got here. How did we get here? Did we spend too much? We need answers before I start making decisions on adding more to your pocketbook. Thank you.
Thank you all so very much. And now we'll move on to our final question. This is a teen center issue. The question is, are the councilors going to do anything about moving the teen center? Many seniors continue to be upset about the different limits put on their time. Before the teens came, we had special events on Tuesday evenings that many enjoyed and missed. So we're gonna start at this end. And I know you're number nine. There you go.
Let me first publicly let everybody know that I am a board member of the Malden Teen Enrichment Center. So that's probably gonna sway my answer. I think in the perfect world, we would have dedicated space, both in terms of physical facilities and programming for each. Unfortunately, I think you've just heard the question asked several ways. We're asking for more money. I don't think it's quite possible, and I would be very honest with you, probably unfeasible to get a separate facility right now for either the youth or the seniors. Now, I think what we could do, though, is, if there really is a challenge in terms of timing and not being allowed to use that space equitably, I think we can do that. But I can't sit here and publicly even think about us getting another facility for either segment of that population. It's just not something in the cards right now. I think, I personally at one time thought it was great to have the teens in there with, with the, the older individuals. They could learn a little bit from each other. I hope that would still be the way, where the, the youth can learn from the, from the, the older people, who are definitely wiser and vice versa. But if this, this is the first time I'm honestly hearing about this, but I would be more than happy to look at that as a board member and as a city counselor. I don't want one segment to feel slated. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for this question. I have heard the question, and I agree that the short-term reality is, like, we don't have another facility and we can't really afford one. But I think that's not the spirit of the question. And I recognize first that our, our senior center has gotten really popular. And we've got booming programs, and we're pressed for space. And so that's, you know, that's the problem you want to have. I, I give a lot of credit to the, the staff that work there and the programs that are offered. And we need to support our, our youth and our teens, and, and we've been trying to do that more. We have now a Malden Youth Council. The Councilor Cologne Hayes has really tried to get going. And we also have youth members of many more of our just regular boards and commissions, which is fabulous. And I, I think that it would be really helpful to engage our youth in some big-term picture, some big-term conversation, big picture, excuse me, big-picture conversations about what you would want to see. Because my hope is, if we can make it through this budget crunch, we'll be in a position to then talk about what are the facilities we want to have in the future. We've had a number... Thank you.
She's quick on that.
I'm ready. We, so we've had another conversations about community centers, like the Oak Grove Community Center, right? And so when we're thinking about the, the future of city facilities, we need to build the youth needs into that. And I would love to, the arts, the potential arts center, I would love to be in conversation about, like, what can you imagine and how can we work on a timeline, and then solve whatever the short-term problems there are. And maybe there are other grants or, or ways we can go about doing that. I do just want to note also, just to the previous question, we actually do audit the city budget every year. We have outside auditors who come and review all of our books. And so I think it'd be great to, yeah, I mean, that, I think it's, I think it's law. Yeah, so I think, I think we're due to have a, you know, to have our CFO come down and talk to us about what the most recent audit said. So I, I just want to note, I, I think that's great that we should dig into more of that. But I really welcome more conversation with our youth leaders about, like, what you'd love to see, and, and that's always great.
Well, first I have to say...
Well, first I have to say that I think, you know, involving our youth and our seniors in one facility in itself can absolutely, you know, have its challenges. And I think it could just be a scheduling issue. You know, maybe one's all at night and one's during the day, and maybe we have to mix that up a little to make sure everybody's needs are met. You know, there are options as well as, you know, we have a lot of nonprofit groups in our city that have, starting their new community centers and having their meetings, and they all have youth groups. So maybe it's time that we can interconnect some of those groups together to see what we can do to make it so our Teen Enrichment Center can move easily. You know, one of the things, as the Malden Lion I am, one of the things we're hoping to do is work with the Teen Enrichment Center on some service projects. And I think that, you know, getting them more out into the community and involved. Zonta has a young women's z-club group that can also weave in and out of different things. And I think if we all come together and bring people together, and I think it's going to be really well to working that out. And I also want to add to the audit. By the way, I spoke with our CFO, and as a matter of fact, our 2025 audit will be finished by December 31st and published, along with everybody, all the other audits that are up there. And that is state law, and that is done every single solitary year. So I just wanted to let them know that.
Again, coming at the end, you seem to end up repeating. I was thrilled when I first heard after the loss of the Teen Enrichment Center that the Senior Center would be hosting, because I saw a great opportunity for both communities to meet, to interact, to learn from each other. I agree, this feels somewhat like a scheduling issue. Because during the school day, for example, the teens aren't going to be able to use the center. The seniors will. Perhaps a few more opportunities for evening programs could be developed, could be made available. Insofar as just having a replacement, no. I can't see, in what limited access I've had and time spent on the budget, I don't see how a new facility is available at this time. My best response would be to make best use of what is there and the opportunity to interact and to work with each other. There is, I see, a great opportunity for both sides to hold classes for the others, to interact with the others. And I've occasionally walked by the center and seen such interactions going on through the windows, and been thrilled to see it. Or at least, that's what appears to be going on in some of the game rooms and other things. But I have to say, I am thrilled for the question. As was mentioned, in some cities, in some areas, to get people below or just coming up to voting age to want to be involved is difficult. And that there is such engagement in Malden is one of the reasons I'm so thrilled and proud to live here.
Thank you very much. I can't tell you how excited I am for this question. I have been meeting with seniors for years, and this is a real problem. So I'm surprised that it's coming as sort of a shock to some. I have gone to the senior centers. I've met with Mass Senior Action Council. There is a big issue with the way the youth, which should have been a beautiful thing. Don't get me wrong. I was actually the senior center director when we decided and discussed this happening. And it was supposed to be a intergenerational, like, activities were supposed to be going on, and that was during COVID. And then after COVID, once COVID hit, I was like, whoa, put the brakes on. You can't put two at-risk populations in one place with no, they didn't have a full-time custodian. So it has been an issue since it began, because the seniors were told one thing, the youth were told another thing. So what I've been doing is trying to talk with them and really just listen to them, because they are very frustrated. There were programs, they'd have, they have movie nights. They'd be able to have, a community would go in there, and we would do events, and the seniors could co on, you know, after hours. So there is some struggle. I do think it could work out, but it really does need some management and time, especially when the seniors are leaving. They actually have to leave a little earlier now than they, than they used to have to. Everybody is supposed to be out of the door before the youth get in. So that time of the movement of in and out, I think if we figure that out, it could be a better place. And if we actually held a lot more, I did hold intergenerational activities. I see them how I do cooking with Karen. I've done, you know, games in there where we involved the youth and the seniors, and they loved it. So I think it is a matter of making sure that we
Thank you also very much for answering those questions. And now we're going to move to our lightning round questions. These are a series of five questions that require yes or no. What I'll do is I'll
Okay, guys, just a reminder to submit your questions over here so we can get them ready for the open audience, all right? Thank you.
Well, it seems like you all have little yes or no, so then I guess you'll just hold them up. So we'll start. The first question is, are we ready? Counsel, are we ready? Okay. Do you support giving Malden the authority to explore and pursue rent stabilization or similar policies to address rising housing costs? Yes, yes, please hold it up. Okay. Do you want me to ask the question again? Okay. Thank you so much. Question number two, my apologies. I'm going to try to speak up and allow my voice to project to the back. Question number two. And the candidates will lift up their yes or no response to the questions. Do you support expanding language access and interpretation services at city council meetings?
I can't read.
Thank you. Would you support creating a citywide plan to improve recycling and waste management? Thank you. Would you support expanding youth leadership and after-school programs with city funding? Everybody? Great. Final question. Do you support participatory budgeting where residents can directly vote on certain budget allocations? Great. Now we're going to move on to our open audience questions. These are questions submitted by you, and we thank you so much for delivering these questions. They've been carefully reviewed by our partners. And each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond. Okay. Okay, great. First question. With the Malden River Works water park plan for 2026, what three actions would you take to activate and revitalize the Malden River? Let's start at this end.
Yes. Okay, so Malden River Works project, full disclosure, I am very much involved with that. I am so excited for this project to come to fruition. It's going to be like a game changer, transition for our city. I would support what is going to be coming on tomorrow's agenda, which is, in the finance committee, we'll probably talk about it. We want to fund the rest with a loan, but we can get into that and talk it out, the rest of this project, because it's going to not only help access, we do not have access at the Malden River. I'm a canoeer. I go there. We got to go in at different cities. This will bring jobs. This will bring so much to us. So I think that we can help them by getting them across the finish line with the funding that they need. And not only that, the funding does also help the DPW. So I just want to be sure people know that, the DPW is in shoddy shape. So a lot of that funding went to make our DPW better and safer. So whatever I can do to help, I've been doing over the past few years. And I'm just so excited for this to happen. It's going to be just a wonderful, wonderful resource for us here. Thank you.
I agree. This is an area that allows for so much. What I would probably come up with, or look at, rather, for supporting and engaging is some of the same methods that you've seen for supporting and building up stadiums and colosseums in different cities, where they actually, you're going to have, I would assume, there would be docks, there would be areas for access. And actually put in an opportunity for people to support the project by putting either in named bricks or named other areas, ways to help support and bring in funding. Because as we've said, the city is a little low on money. This is something where people can actually then, either it's putting a name on a brick, naming different areas of the location. It's a way conclusion.
Thank you. So this is kind of two ways for me. One, I'd like to see, you know, I'd love to see this finished. So I would love to go back to our state contingency where we can and ask what grants are still available, what can we do from a city standpoint? You know, we do have a budget crunch, so it's not going to be much being able to come out of our budgets. But maybe there's more grants and things that we can qualify for as we add. Maybe we're adding an arts area. Maybe we add more educational fund. We can try for educational funding and things of that nature. One of the things that's really important to me, as it is with all the rest of the parks that we have and all the money that we've invested, is that we really need to have a thorough maintenance plan going forward for the river, for the river and other areas in our city. It's really important. And again, I would love to see more arts. We can involve nonprofits for service, for service projects. And I think that would be a great community effort.
Okay, three things to help the Malden River Works project. First, yes, we do have to finish the project. It's an amazing, award-winning project that has huge community support. And it's like a $10 million project, if memory serves. And so this, you know, we have to find a way to make it through the final leg here. And obviously, we will be talking about that at the city council, and I am very open to ideas. So we got to finish the project. We really need to improve enforcement of the permits that are there right now. Businesses there are supposed to be clearing certain types of brush and protecting the path that is there, pushing for certain agreements, like with National Grid, especially on the other side of the river, where like, they, again, have not lived up to what they've said. So I think we could increase the pressure there. But three, the big picture is that if we have a vision for the future of the access to the river, that has to be a part of a vision for the whole commercial street corridor. Because only the investment in the corridor is what's going to bring the investment to build a beautiful path and public space. And you were referencing this earlier, a counter metaphor. So that's not necessarily a new idea. Many folks in our community have been advocating for this for a long, long time. And what I want to say is, I think the time is here. And so if that's a vision that excites you, let's talk. Like, let's start building the momentum to really rethink the corridor in ways that will actually get a huge, beautiful, you know, signature opportunity for Malden to access that river and make our community proud.
Thank you. Real quick. This needs to be short term and long term. You want a vision, you want to change things. First one is, you got to change the zoning in that area, not just canal, not just commercial. I would even go over further into Ward 1, that changes that whole area. The reason why? You change that zoning to make it more commercial, industrial. When I mean industrial, beer gardens, outdoor water parks, or something like, we don't have any indoor water parks around here, right? For the kids, you see these things, this activity, that brings people there. You have those businesses, those taxes pay for all the improvements there. Of course, we have to do it. But the short term is, you finish the project. The long-term plan is, you take that entire area with a little patience, and you build an entire system there. You look at areas, the seaport, it doesn't happen overnight, right? But you need a plan, you need patience, and you show them what you can build down there. And you have, it's got to take private money. We cannot do it with public money. So we need a little incentive. And then the long-term thing is, if you make the value of that property more expensive, you're going to have to move the DPW. Because if that property, I'm saying five or 10 years out, or 10, you got to think long-term. You take that piece of property and you make it more valuable, a developer comes and develop, and you get access to the river with parking and all the things we need there, and you put the DPW somewhere else. Short term, long term, that's not happening in two years. That's 10 years. But you got to have a vision.
Thank you so much. John, is everything okay? All right, okay, all right. So the next question is, residents have been advocating for a Center for the Arts and Culture at Old Courthouse. How would you advocate for this? I'm going to do popcorn style. I'm going to start with Solomon.
Oh, thank you. I was actually thinking about this one today, and, because I live very close to that area. I think an interesting concept would be, because of the limited amount of space within the rooms that are already there, is to actually look at the bottom floor as display space, perhaps a gift shop. For what I plan for the higher rooms and locations, possibly individual artist studios, where people can actually work on various types of creations, whether it's sculpture, whether it's painting, other forms of art, which they could then sell in the first gift, in the first floor gift shop, which is then available, sharing part of what's earned out of that with the center itself to help maintain it. But it not only allows people to create their art, but to promote it, to publicize it, to share. When people think of the arts, they often think of performing arts, and there's nothing wrong with that. But unfortunately, I don't see a theater space within there. But I do see an ideal location, considering the rooms within it, for people to work on creating art. And perhaps sharing studio space and exchanging and learning and working with each other.
We're going to Sorry. We're going to make sure that we're on time. And these questions are actually going to, the responses will be one minute. I'm going to ask a question again, and I'll do popcorn style. The question was from the audience. Residents have been advocating for a Center for the Arts and Culture at Old Courthouse. How would you advocate for this? And I'm going to go with Craig. There you go.
Thank you. Again, I think it's one of these questions where we have a front row seat to a fiscal disaster that could happen to us. And the idea right now to put any money into that facility would be just unjust to the residents. When we first purchased it from the state, I said, if we're in that need, and I agree, of public housing, that should be affordable lofts. It is very nice to have the idea of having an art community center in the city of Malden. That is not a viable building. It's not a Chevalier Theater. And it's one of these things, yes, I'd like to have it. But if you're asking me to cut jobs to build an arts community center right now, the answer would be no. I mean, that's why that project's mothballed right now. If we're going to play, yeah, would I like to have it game? Yeah, I'd like to have it. I'd like to have a stadium too, but that's not going to happen, right? So I think realistically, we should figure out a way to monetize that. And if that's ownership, Solomon's got a great idea, David, in terms of maybe doing some art there. But I think it's just not feasible at this point to have it. And there's other areas we can look at for a location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So there is already lots of work and planning that has been done by Councilor Linehan. She has a steering committee, so a lot of the stuff that you're all talking about has already been talked about and discussed, and they're waiting also. It hasn't been movement, most likely, because of this funding. I will be honest with you, I see not, I think it would be a fantastic place located down in, in the center to have somewhere where people can come, view the arts, have, and, you know, buy stuff from vendors in there and give back to our community. But I do also agree, this is probably not the best time to be talking about that, but I would definitely go back to Councilor Linehan, and I'll check in with her to see where that project is at.
Councilor McDonald.
Yeah, I do agree that it's time to, well, get creative about the arts, the art center project. Yeah, thank you. And, and a lot of credit to Councilor Linehan for shepherding the community vision about this up to this point. But the truth is that we don't have the money right now for the amazing investment this would take. It is an economic development tool, it's important to think about it like that, that could bring jobs and, and, and customers to the city. There are two parking lots associated with the building. I think that's where I would start with the housing conversation. Can we monetize the parking lots in a, and invest in housing in a way that might enable us to fund parts of the building in, in different kinds of phases? And not for nothing, it is a building that we own, and I would love to see if there are more kind of adaptive reuse, low investment things we could do. Maybe the, maybe the teen center can hang out there sometimes, I don't know. relieve some pressure on the senior center. So I just think we have to get creative with the assets that we have. It's a really great asset, and I'd love to have more community conversations about it.
Thank you. Michelle.
It's always wonderful to go last, because everybody has said everything. But in reality, if we were in a perfect world, I would say the building is best used as a mixed use. Making sure that the part that's the business part, obviously takes care of the building, and it doesn't necessarily have to make a huge profit, but enough for it to be sustainable so that we can, we could build an art center there. That is for the young, for the, for the young and as well as the senior. But in reality, we don't have the money. If we're talking about a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override, we, we really can't be talking about this building just quite yet. Thanks.
Thank you all. Next question from the audience is, if elected, how would you manage department head raises when rank and file employees do not have a union contract? We're going to start.
Well, just to enlighten everybody in the crowd, a big portion of our employees are union. Even City Hall employees are in union. Certain ones that are not in the union are not allowed to be in the union by state stature, like our CFO is not allowed to be in the union for state stature. So I think the question is, just not to the rank and file, because if they're in the union, they're part of that bargaining package, whether a police officer, whether they're the, the building commissioner, whether they're a teacher, they're in a bargaining package. I think the, the question really is, how do you continue to pay for the best firemen, policemen, and teachers, given our current situation? And that's really where we have to ask the residents for some of that, that money, as we've been discussing, but also really looking for, again, I'll say it, diversify, diversify in that tax base. And the other thing which hasn't been mentioned is really enforcing the compliance of the ordinance rules we have. There's so many rules in the books that we have that have fines, and we all want to be good neighbors, we all want to be good landlords, some are not. And I think we've been lackluster as a community. I'll stop.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, almost all of the city workforce is unionized, and so what we pay is dictated by what we negotiate. And by we, I really mean the mayor, the city council doesn't play a role in negotiating contracts. We do approve the ultimate salary schedules that come out of those contracts. So, I, I mean, what I've been keeping my eye on is, are the contracts getting roughly equal increases? We've been averaging about 3% cost of living adjustments per year. I think, you know, especially if we can't find a way to close this gap, we're going to have to have hard conversations with our unions about whether, you know, we can, we can lower those certainly in the future. That's not what we want to do, because we already don't pay our city employees in so many cases enough to really even live in Malden. So I, I think I do, I do really look at that, you know, are we getting, are we getting the same raises at the senior levels we are at other levels? But a lot of that is decided by the union negotiations.
There we go. One of the things we can do, because what I'm hearing from the question is that if we have one union that's not, that's working without a contract, and other ones have their contracts. For me, I'd like to start kind of at the basics, to say, do we have a union contract schedule that the union has agreed to and Malden has agreed to? Is that something that we can maybe start planning further ahead so that nobody works without a contract? I know that's probably a perfect world, but we really need to make sure that that is the case, because people do rely on it. That's it.
It's one of those things that is a difficult question and shouldn't be. People should be paid for their work, people should be paid on time for their work. The only idea I have on this off the top of my head, to be very honest, is that we have to prioritize those arrangements. We have to make sure that contracts are settled on time, so people aren't working without a contract, so people aren't working and don't know what they're going to be paid, or if they're going to be paid. Again, a lot of these things are set already by the unions involved. We have to be very careful as we go through the budgeting process, that we're not hiring people that we can't afford, but we're not losing the jobs we desperately need filled.
Thank you very much. So this question, I actually thought of this the first time I saw this, the agenda that's supposed to be coming out tomorrow, and I saw that we were going to be talking about, or maybe just referring to finance, a, a raise for the teamsters, the directors level. I immediately contacted, like, some of my rank and file teamsters who work for the city of Malden, because I did stand out with them in solidarity when they were right here in front of City Hall, because they did not have a signed contract. So I called them up, and unless something changed from last night, they still don't have a signed contract. So yes, I do have an issue with giving, I mean, listen, are unions deserve what they get, the people deserve what they get paid? But if it's unfair, and they're going on their second time of getting a raise when the rank and file have not gotten even a signed contract yet, then there's something wrong. So whatever I can do to help finalize that, I'm definitely going to do, and so I hope that happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Next question from the audience, and once again, it's 60-second response. If elected on the council, how would you work with the council body in keeping oversight transparent with city spending? And we'll start back with you, Karen.
Thank you. Great. My favorite topic, transparency. So what I would like to see, I'm always talking about open government, making sure that I post my agendas, that I make sure that the people of Malden know what's going on at all times, but within, amongst ourselves, what I would like to see more is the mayor, the legislative branch, and the executive branch working more together. So I would like to see transparency, having the mayor sit in on our finance committees. I loved when he came down recently, and I think that that would help. Once, when we all know information, it just helps, it helps us all. I heard Counselor Carrie and Craig were talking about a meeting that they had, I don't know what meeting they're talking about. They were talking about, I think there was a finance committee or steering thing or something, and there's no, you know, I couldn't find any meeting minutes on it, but I think we all have to be involved in that. It shouldn't just be a select few, and it needs to be transparent, you know? We all, we all need to help on this.
I agree. Transparency is, is so important, and we already have a number of things posted on the city website. It's been enhanced over the years incredibly. I appreciate that very much. But I must agree with Karen, we need meeting minutes posted, we need clear indication of where things are. One thing only slightly connects, I will pledge right now, as a counselor at large, representing everyone in the city, I will hold, hold open meetings, I'm used to office hours, where I will meet with, with the residents of Malden on a very regular basis, whether it's once a month, once every two weeks, to hear your concerns so I can bring them forward, and post everything that goes on at those.
You know, one thing I think is amazing is that, you know, our website does have all of the information about how our fiscal year ended with an audit done by a separate company, and that's available for every counselor and everybody here. We have open meetings on the finance committee. I invite people to go and watch it, and, and to listen to everything that happens there, and every other committee, committee's open meetings. I think the, I think the issue is at hand, is that people don't necessarily know where to find the information, and we also have misinformation that is out onto social media, and unfortunately, that clouds everybody's judgment. So as a city council, I can pledge to you that if you have a question, come see me, I will investigate. Just as I saw everybody yelling for an audit, I spoke to, I spoke to the CFO today to find that information ahead of time. And I, that is what I
Thank you so much.
cityofmalden.org/budget has an itemized list of every expenditure line in the city budget going back years and years and years. It's a really amazing resource. I encourage you to check it out. If anything, it's probably, yes, too much information. So, you know, I, I've been committed to running the most transparent finance committee meetings that we have. Before, all, you know, city council meetings were online, all committee meetings, the finance committee was, because it's important. But, you know, what I want to say is that the work of, of going line by line is work that each of us has to do. When we have ideas, this job is not just about what you think, it's about what you can do, and what you can follow up on, and what you can make happen by building support, by digging in. And, and we all need to do that. We all need to follow up on our individual pieces, and we need to make sure that the platforms exist so that the public understands that. But I think our, our city financial transparency is absolutely essential. That doesn't mean we don't have hard choices. The transparency reveals hard choices ahead.
Yeah. Transparency in terms of our, our budget has never been better. The technology is there, you can go line by line, like Council McDonald said, even at the state level. I would, I would tell everybody to go online and look at the trends in local receipts by, by the state. It's unbelievable data to show what we're doing against our peers and our neighbors, and this is work I do on my own. So I don't think there's a question of transparency, maybe it's a question of understanding, and if that's that, reach out to any of your councils, reach out to the mayor, reach out to CFO, that's the question. I do want to address the counselor. There wasn't a meeting. Counselor McDonald and myself had coffee to figure out a way how we can work together to grow the commercial tax base. That is not a public meeting. We weren't, we weren't creating the atom, and then we asked the mayor if we could get a master plan together to do this in a short term and long term. And that's the master plan that I, I sponsored last year to do an entire plan on this council chamber, and everybody voted for it. That's what that discussion was. We all have discussions, how do we grow it? I, I do not want to see that change.
Thank you all so very much. And the next question for, for the candidates, it's a 60-second question, sorry, is, as a counselor at large, what steps will you take to protect our neighbors from unlawful ICE kidnappings within our city? And we're going to start back with you, Craig, and move back to the right.
A recent topic. I will tell you first and foremost, I do not think we should be pulling people off the street if their visas expired. However, I also don't think we should be jumping to conclusions that, that sometimes some of these people that have been pulled off the street have done violent and horrendous acts. Take in point, there was a gentleman lost, two days ago, that had sexual intercourse with a child. I don't care if that person's illegal, illegal, I don't care how they arrested him. A, a, a crime against a child is unlawful. There's a balance. There's a balance. But I also believe, when I took the oath, when I became a counselor, I swore on the state and the constitution. Do I think they've taken steps to, to be a little bit more violent? I have. But the idea that we're going to step in front of any police agency is unrealistic, and it's not right, to be quite honest with you.
So when crime is the question, that is baiting us. The federal administration in DC is bent on terrorizing communities like Malden, communities that are built on immigrants, that that's what makes us great, is that people from all over the world want to come to Malden. And so two weeks ago, when one of our community members was, yes, his car was rammed on the street, ICE broke his window, they wouldn't identify themselves, they tried to snatch him out of his vehicle, and stuck a taser in his face, and sent him to the hospital, it was time for Malden's leaders to, to stand up and speak up. And that's what so many of us did. I went to the press conference with the, with the wife, who is an attorney with Greater Boston Legal Services. We had an amazing show of community support. We need that solidarity right now to show that we care, and we are fighting for the safety of our immigrant neighbors and immigrant-led organizations in the community. Nothing short of that is going to help protect our neighbors in the face of this, just terror, just terrorizing our community that is only going to get worse. So now is the time for all of us to say we stand with our immigrant neighbors.
This is a real hard topic for me. My husband's only been a citizen for 10 years, and he himself is an immigrant. So when I watched that video of that man's car being rammed and dragged, dragged out, and I was at the, I was also at the, just need a second, I was at the rally, and I watched his family just break down. And that's really hard. Everything should be by due process, so don't get me wrong. If somebody is not here legally, and they have to go through the due process, then that's, there's rules, there's laws. But to inhumanely treat someone to the extent that we've noticed is disgusting. And I absolutely stand with the council, the letter that was written, I stand that. And, you know, it's really difficult, and it's very scary. So people are afraid to speak up, they are afraid to identify themselves as, you know, working I will encourage everybody to work with people from behind the scenes that are trying to make this better.
My congregation was built on immigrants, and encouraged immigrants throughout its history. What has been going on has been a travesty. I took a course in grads, in undergraduate, on film and revolution in Latin America, and remember students at the time in the class saying, what, what is this disappearing thing? And we're seeing it happen now, in the United States of America, or a representation of it. This is where the city council can come together and start making a public show of what they disagree with, how they disagree with what is going on on the national level. There are laws. Unfortunately, the way ICE is currently behaving is perfectly legal under their rules and regulations. But that doesn't mean that people can't stand up and oppose it and fight to change those laws.
Thank you very much. I put out something on social media with me talking, it was very, very emotional. Watching what is happening in our city makes me furious. And going to that rally, I cried while I watched the family. I've had personal matters in my, in my own family that this has happened to, so it really affects me. But what I've done to be proactive about this is, you know, we can't go into the, you know, fear mongering also, like, yeah, making us scared that everybody here is a criminal or something. But I held a Know Your Rights panel, and I made sure that it was recorded so that everybody can watch it and in the safety of their own home. And we had immigration lawyers on there, we had Mira on there, it was translated, and we made sure that people know how to protect themselves. And when they know that they're safe and how to keep themselves safe, it keeps all of us safe, even our police officers, it keeps everyone safe. So I say we keep doing them. So I say we keep doing them.
Thank you all so much. Next question from the audience. If elected, what kind of public safety that protects the peace of residents would you prioritize when it comes to gun ownership in Malden? And we'll start with Craig.
Do you read the question?
Sure. If elected, what kind of public safety that protects the peace of residents would you prioritize when it comes to gun ownership in Malden?
Yeah. Well, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as you may and may not know, has some of the strictest gun laws in the country, both in terms of the type of weapon you could use, in terms of the amount of ammunition. You have to take a federal safety course, you have to be approved to carry a concealed weapon by the local police chief, and you also have to have a background check by the FBI. In terms of the safety, I think there's been a lot of great work done by the state in terms of if there's a domestic issue, they take the gun away, the police department has gotten very good at that. I think that's the challenge. The council has no jurisdiction there, but in terms of making sure that if somebody has a weapon, they should, and they have mental illness or they're in a situation of spouse abuse, yes, that weapon should be taken away from that owner immediately. That's all I think the council can quite honestly do in that situation.
So councillor Spatafora summed it up well at the state level. We have really good, relatively, gun safety laws in Massachusetts, and that's why we don't have some of the rates of violent crime that you see in other cities and states. So I really support that. But, you know, when I think about public safety, I think about, well, what are the things I hear? And I'll tell you the top issue that I hear, the two top issues that I hear are safety for walking and biking, like speeding on our roads, and we have started now a new police community advisory council that I really helped usher through. They had their first public forum, actually, Mr. Davidoff was there, and what we heard is that, you know, the majority of the difficult calls that our police respond to, of course, are folks experiencing mental health problems, like an illness, and so we really need ways to put more resources and capacity there. They have one mental health clinician, they really need another, but I think that's a key part, and making sure, yes, that weapons stay out of those homes, but that really we're ensuring people get the full range of services they need, and that's not treated as just criminalization because this is much more effective. Yeah, thank you.
Malden has, Malden as Massachusetts has a very vigorous process for residents to get their gun permit, and it's not just handed out just to anybody. So with that said, there's, if there's safety, if the residents are concerned with certain safety, we could, we could look to having more educational programs, but where it comes here is I'd have to agree, we have a new mental health facility opening up or has opened, and I look forward to seeing how that is going to impact our residents, and hopefully that will bring more residents into receiving the help that they desperately need. So that's what I'm looking forward to seeing.
I can speak to this somewhat. I was born, raised, bred in Ohio. Trust me, there are good gun laws here. When my parents died, we found a gun amongst my father's things. He'd received it from my fa, from his father, and we called the police, asking what we can do about this. Nobody's licensed, we now have a weapon. They said, we don't care. It's yours. I was mortified. I am, I support those who actually go through training programs, have responsible storage, and that is what is necessary. I fully, fully endorse mental health support, and the problem is, instead, this is not a city issue as much as it is a state law issue, but the laws we have are incredible comparatively.
Thank you so very much, and now we're going to move on to, oh, I'm sorry.
So I'm not sure who, what they were trying to get at with the question. The first thing that popped into my mind was like, certainly no assault rifles, like anything that goes by, I am dead set against any kind of rule for that, but you're right. Malden, we don't really have the ability to do that, but I did start and, and did the police use of force, which we worked with the police, the Obama's pledge, and we tried to make sure that our police, we ran over and we kind of updated it. But before this ends, I have to say, I'm a little uncomfortable with the amount of mental health talk and the guns, so I'm just going to point out that people with mental health issues are not dangerous people. I do agree that if you have a mental health issue, you probably shouldn't be great, well, depending on what it is, but that is a very fine line, and I'm not like hearing the, assuming that someone with mental health issues could be dangerous, so, thank you.
Thank you all. And now we'll move on to closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to share their final thoughts, and this time we'll start with you, Karen.
So I just want to say thank you again to everybody who showed up for this. The questions were tremendous. I really enjoyed answering them. I really enjoyed meeting the candidates, hearing more about them, and I'm feeling really good about the November 4th election. I think that we can all work, I'm going to go back to what I said when I first opened up, which was listening to people, and listening to people and going to where the people are at and meeting them in places like I do is how we're going to get all your voices to the table, and that's how we're going to move Malden forward together to make this the best city that I already feel it is, but even better. And so please, and if you do, check me out, you want to volunteer at, you can email me at teamkch2025@gmail.com, and we're looking for volunteers. We go out at least twice a week, and we have a lot of fun. So thank you so much. I want to give a shout out, my husband's here and he never, ever comes to anything, so, thank you.
Of course, thank you to everyone involved in putting this on, and especially those of you who are in attendance or who are watching through UMA. The character of Malden is what encouraged my wife and I to move here 18 years ago, and it's a place we intend to stay. The diversity, the friendliness, the devotion the residents have to this city. I'm asking you to lend me your support to vote for me on November 4th for the role of councillor at large, or rather, the job of councillor at large. The role is that of public servant. This is my home. This is where my wife and I had our son and are raising our son. We plan to be here for the rest of our lives. I feel strongly, though, that we can improve where the city is going. We can improve how everybody works together to improve the city and our lives together. If you have questions about me, about what I'm doing, please, you can contact me online, Davidofffromalden, with a number four, and I do my best to respond to questions as soon as possible, and as I said before, I do pledge, if elected, to hold regular meetings with my constituents, with the city, with anyone who wishes to come up.
Thank you to everyone for taking the time to just be here. It is, it's time out of our schedules, and I just want to say how grateful I am. You know, I, I grew up in Malden, as I said, as a resident, a mom, small business owner, community advocate. I've worked hard to listen, to lead with compassion, and I've brought people together, different nonprofits together, and just people in general. And as your city councillor, I will lead with that same passion. But more importantly, I will lead with fairness, and I will lead as I listen to the people I have on the doors, listening to exactly what they want and trying to deliver that. My campaign has always been about community and bringing people together, listening first and making government work better for everyone. You know, my website is michellefromalden.com, and I encourage you to reach out if there's anything anybody needs or any questions, but I really ask for your vote because I really want to make sure that I can be here for everyone from Ward 1 to Ward 8 and everybody in between. If you're a Republican, you're a Democrat, you're unenrolled, it doesn't really matter. What matters is, is that if you have needs and you have things that, as a councillor at large, that I can help you with, please give us, please give me a call. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a huge honor to be elected to serve your community, and it's one I take, you know, not lightly, and I love this role. I want to ask for your support for another term as Malden City Councillor at Large. I said at the beginning, I'll just recap the themes of my campaign around sustainability, affordability, and inclusivity, but my colleagues on this stage have said it well, you know, there's much more listening than talking involved in running for office, and I love hearing from folks all the time. I encourage you to check out my website if you want to learn more at mcdonaldfromalden.com, or you can follow me on Instagram, or you can give me a phone call. My number is 7816275506. Hope I don't regret saying that. And, and I would love your support to volunteer or donate, but I want to close with an ask, yeah, Craig, you got my number, but I want to close, I really want to close with an ask to say, I hope that all of you will get involved. Support one of the candidates that you liked on this stage today. You've already beat the spread, you turned out on a Monday night to watch this two-hour forum, so thank you for being here. But your work matters in your community. 10 voices can change the course of an issue in a city, and I, and I think anyone who's worked in Malden will tell you that that's true, that there's a lot of people who care and a lot of people who listen. Yes, even when we don't disagree, it's important to support one another and lift each other up. That's what I'm here for. Thank you so much to our community groups and partners. You're the best of what Malden is, and you show what's possible when we work together. Thank you so much.
I want to thank everybody too that made this possible. I also want to thank the audience, councillor McDonald said it best, you know, when we have council meetings, we have a public meeting for the budget every year, and the joke is with councillor McDonald, we have more people show up when you want to name a street than you pass a $300 million budget. I want to see these people, I want to see you not just here, but in the community. This is Malden, it's been a great crowd, and I would be honored to serve another two years. But on, but on the topic of a serious note, we've all talked about what is coming. I believe with my background, and my leadership, I can make those tough decisions to make sure that not, people not only get to stay in their homes, people get to stay in their apartments, but we also can make it affordable that people can own something. I'm a big advocate of more ownership. That's the American dream, that creates generational wealth. We just cannot be letting developers put rental after rental, and we have to balance that with commercial and industrial. That is not a one-year plan, that's not a two-year plan, that is a plan we all have to work together. Councillor McDonald and I, self, had coffee a year ago talking about it. We have to make that faster. But you also have to look around, you've learned something about the candidates, but you also have to understand who's willing to work with each other and compromise. You cannot get anything done in this city without six votes or eight votes. That's the math. I, I promise you, I'd be one of those councillors. We don't agree on all the numbers, but I will agree, and I think it's very important we come together as a team on the council if I'm elected next year to really face on those problems that are serious and not nice to haves, because everybody in this room will be affected.
Thank you all to the candidates. Thank you everyone for coming out, and please, go out and vote.